All right, good evening. I will call this January 5th, 2023. Samamish Planning Commission meeting in order. Let's start out with roll call. Jerry Norman.
Present.
Jerry Bosworth.
Present.
John Bachman.
Here.
Mike Bresko.
I'm here.
Josh Amato.
Here.
I am Mark Baughman, and I'm here. TC Labby.
I am online.
Great, good to see you, TC. Can we read the meeting accessibility statement?
The public is welcome to attend Planning Commission meetings in person at City Hall, 801 228th Avenue Southeast, or virtually through Zoom. In accordance with the latest public health guidance, masks are recommended but not required for in-person attendance. Public comments: Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes for non-agenda comment, five minutes if representing an organization, and seven minutes for agenda public comment. For those providing comments through Zoom, once you have dialed into the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to indicate you would like to provide public comment. Your mic will remain muted until you are called on during the public comment period. To give public comment via Zoom, join the webinar via the link To give public comment via mobile or landline telephone, dial the following number: US+1-253-215-8782, webinar ID 82822648794.
Thank you, Julian. Next is approval of the agenda for this evening. We've got a couple items on the agenda this evening. Any comments about the agenda? Nope, seeing no comments. We'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Next, approval of the meeting minutes from the December 15th meeting. Anybody have any comments or corrections from the December 15th meeting? I don't see anything, so we'll call the meeting minutes from the December 15th meeting approved by common consent. Next, public comment for non-agenda items. Just a reminder to everybody, this evening's main topic of business on the agenda is the greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled reduction strategy. And then we're also going to do a little report on the year-end review for 2020. So for non-agenda items, so anything else, now's the time for public comment. Julian, what do we have?
And we have one hand raised. Ms. Wichter, I'm going to promote you to panelist.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Happy New Year 2023. Glad to see you all. I wasn't able to attend tonight, so the items that I passed out in December, those who weren't there, they were how to build the community, and I will try to get those to you at the next one. I also had emailed in, it was after 5:00 today, some information. A group in Bozeman, Montana, where my family's been since 1964, they have a city that's about the same size as Samamish, about 55,000 people, and then the area around 65,000, so it's roughly the same. They've also been voted as like one of the best places to live, and they're encountering growth. But one thing that they do that I think it would be very worthwhile for our city to do is have different advisory boards or more advisory boards. For example, the Urban Forestry Management Plan has not really been able to make a lot of progress, and I think that there are study groups or people that would be interested in working some of the strategies or ideas or goals or policies for that. And the one that I sent in today, there is a sustainability board in Bozeman, Montana, that they use for things. And Bozeman started the Urban Forestry Management Plan in 1983, for example, and they had almost 40 boards to do a number of things, everything from the cemetery to other things. And since that time, they've decided, as of December in 2021, that they'd like to cull and reduce and merge those boards and pick the people who are really interested and most applicable to the areas. So they ended up with five supergroup advisory boards, which I think is very worthwhile, looking at the title of those, everything from transportation to climate and other things. But what that does is that gives a group of people, they actually use work plans for every single advisory board. So they have a work plan, they have budgets that can be all the way up to a million dollars to do things with in support of what the city manager and the city commission, as it's called there, it'd be the city council here. So I really hope that you'll look at that. They did make some recommendations related to the climate plan for things to watch or look at. I know we have a lot of students that have been calling in with things, and one of the best ways to get educated is to see other things online. So I think in addition to looking to, you know, like what nearby cities like Bellevue, Redmond, Issaquah, Woodinville, Kirkland do for things, I think it's important also to look out of state. So I did send in quite a lengthy email. It's got things you can click on and look at, and I hope that you will look at that in your free time. There's one six-minute thing, and if you watch nothing else, you should watch that because it gives 65 specific actions in six focus areas and three things that they want to do. And it's just, it's very worthwhile. So I spent the time to write it up. I hope you look at some of it, and if you read nothing else, there are a couple attachments that give the resolution for creating an advisory board and also the purposes for it. So anyway, Happy New Year again, glad to see everyone, and hopefully at the next meeting I'll come in person. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Wichter. And we have one more hand raised. Mr. Stickney, I'm going to promote you to panelist.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Paul Stickney, Samamish. And Julian, it was nice to see you for the first time. They showed a camera shot of you. Anyway, I'm gonna read a comment that I gave to the city council on Tuesday. I sent them the same information that I sent you guys as a non-agenda comment. You know, it's time to really face our number-one problem in Samamish is which direction on housing supplies, services, and transportation is best for our community. We've been sort of plagued and had different ideas on this over the last 20 years. And one of the reasons it hasn't been resolved is it's never really been fully informed and what I call a fair fight. There's information that's needed, consequences need to be compared, and different ideologies should be equally empowered with that information and try to come together, find something that works for all of us. So in the public comment I sent tonight, there's one thing that I think has to happen in order to reach a good decision as a community on housing and transportation and services. We all need to level with each other. There can't be hidden stuff. What are common facts? What are differences in ideology? Let's try to find common ground based on a level set information. But there's a lot of evidence coming out in PRR that there was much covert material, background information the last several years that council members were doing behind the scenes. I think that has to stop. A couple examples in those seven batches of information I sent you is there was one where the city attorneys were holding back emails from Pam Stewart, and they were instructed to do that. I think that's off-base. What do you think? Another was a council member suggested to another council member that they deny a town center application. That's an administrative function. I think that's off-base. What are your thoughts? Another was where one council member said to another, "Four out of five of us are in agreement." OPMA violation. This kind of stuff has to stop. I asked, "Why do you need to use covert, back-channel stuff if you're that confident about a position?" I think what we need to do is all be clear on our ideologies, get information, put it all out in the open, and chat about it. So I think what needs to happen is that to protect our community from potentially moral, ethical, or legal issues, from past and present off-base information, it all needs to be investigated. If there's any actions that need to have recourse, take that. If there's not, everything is brought to light. Let's level with each other, get common facts, and find a solution for housing services and transportation. All right, appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney, and we have no more hands raised.
All right, thanks. I'm super excited to know that Julian, in 2023, got to have his day in the sun of the Planning Commission videos. It's pretty exciting stuff for all of us. Okay, so let's move into our agenda topics for this evening first. And the real, I think, meat of the discussion this evening is going to be, starting off with our greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled reduction strategy and the adjacent climate change and resilient comprehensive plan element. And then, in addition, the Climate Action Plan, which we're going to be getting going on. So there's a mouthful there. Let's go ahead and get started. Evan, are you going to introduce our folks from Brightworks?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Tonight, we have with us our team, a consultant team from Brightworks, Alexis Whitaker, Chris Forney, and Erin Hawking. I'll go ahead and ask them to turn on their cameras, and whenever you're ready, take it away.
Hello, everybody. It's our pleasure to be here this evening. I have our presentation here. We've got a section where we're going to go ahead and introduce ourselves. So I'll get that pulled up, and we can get moving here. All right. Wonderful. Did everybody see my screen all right? Cool.
Yep.
Alrighty, so you mentioned a mouthful at the beginning. We're referring to this entire process as the Climate Action Plan, since that is the largest piece of the puzzle that Brightworks is working on with the city of Samamish. But this process does include comprehensive plan integration as well as the greenhouse gas and vehicle miles traveled reduction strategy. And we have some visuals to illustrate the relationship between this alphabet soup a little bit later in our presentation. So to start off today, we'll introduce ourselves. We're going to go over the scope that we're working on for the city of Samamish, discuss alignment with other regional and county-level partners before getting into the base lining that we've done, the data that we've collected so far, and then getting into timeline and next steps. We do have time saved at the end for Q and A, so we'd appreciate it if you hold all of your answers until the end of the presentation. Hopefully, we can answer a few of those as we go through. Wonderful. So I'd like to introduce Brightworks Sustainability. First, we were founded in 2001. We're the national leading service provider to organizations, public and private, in their planning, implementing, and reporting toward more sustainable outcomes. You can see some of our service areas listed here with a couple of key services related to this project highlighted. Wonderful. We'll go ahead and introduce the team. Chris, why don't you start us off?
Sure. Hi, Chris Forney, Principal of Brightworks Sustainability. And yeah, pleased to support Alexis and Erin, who are your subject matter experts.
Thanks, Chris. I am Alexis, here in the middle. I'm a consultant with Brightworks in our sustainable organizations practice. My background is primarily in decarbonization and climate action planning. Erin?
Yeah, thanks, Alexis. Hi, everyone. My name's Erin Hawking, also a consultant with Brightworks, working within sustainable organizations specializing in greenhouse gas inventories and reporting.
Wonderful. And to give a little bit of background, Brightworks does have a proud history working on these types of projects. We've completed the greenhouse gas VMT reduction analysis for Hanford Site in Richland, Washington. Like Samamish, most of their scope-three emissions come from vehicular travel. So here we study the greenhouse gas impacts of various feed alternatives and worked with agency staff to determine the feasibility and adaptability of those measures to land on a final set of recommendations to meet their Department of Energy targets. We also have listed here the Metro Regional Government Sustainability Impacts Assessment, where we baseline regional impacts, including transportation, energy, water, and waste, to provide some context for goal-setting for their sustainability action plan. We've also worked with the city of Beaverton, where we prepared reporting of city sustainability initiatives according to the Global Reporting Initiative Protocols, in which we established a rigorous and durable platform for ongoing tracking, managing inter-agency environmental, social, and government goals, which the city continues to use. And finally, we have listed here the city of Tygard, where we completed stakeholder engagement to identify and prioritize strategies. We helped them document the first draft of their sustainability action plan and gave city staff the foundation they needed to internally build the ongoing inter-agency sustainability initiatives. I have also worked on some climate action planning myself in the past. I led our climate action planning effort for the San Mateo County Community College District, and I also have a background working in greenhouse gas emissions analysis for climate action planning. So for today, we really want to provide an orientation to the climate action planning process and lay a strong foundation for future input and confirm Planning Commission understanding of our process, progress, and next steps. In particular, we're really curious to get your feedback about the baseline data that we've used so far and why different data sources have been used. We want to confirm that you understand the project's schedule, what our team is working on, and why. And finally, we want to start a conversation around how we can integrate the Climate Action Plan into the commission's schedule. Great. Starting with our scope of work, we are starting this work with interest from the community, but in addition to that community interest, state law requires that we start work around emissions reporting. This happens in House Bill 1241, which includes five-year reporting that is due in 2029 on greenhouse gases and vehicle miles traveled. There is also RCW 3670A, which requires cities to measure greenhouse gas emissions and VMT and establish a reporting call for strategies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled. So our scope here starts off with our grant VMT piece, as you mentioned at the beginning. So for the grant vehicle miles traveled greenhouse gas reduction strategy, we are looking primarily at emissions from transportation and the residential sector. This comes from the grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce that the city of Samamish has secured. In this, we are starting to baseline emissions. From there, we're going to expand out, collect additional data and information, including emissions from buildings and land use sources. So this says all buildings here. That's going to start to include commercial and other things like that. From there, we're going to start integrating the strategies identified in the vehicle miles traveled greenhouse gas emissions reduction portion of the project into the comprehensive plan update before finally rolling all of that up into our climate action plan, where we're going to start to incorporate emissions from waste and city government operations in addition to all of those other categories we've mentioned so far. So you can see that here it says geographic plus. This is a type of inventory that King County and neighboring cities have conducted. It's in alignment with best practices in the industry and with other organizations in the area. So we have a little bit more information on that later on in the presentation if you have any questions about what this geographic plus approach means. And finally, we want to take a second to talk about the overall process at the beginning of this presentation and do some, make sure we're all kind of understanding where we are in the process. So as of now, we're working in this first couple categories, baseline inventory and align to target. There's going to be a process later on where we're forecasting emissions. So looking at the emissions that we have today, what's going to happen under business as usual? What kind of reductions are going to come in from state or regional mitigation measures or new laws, actions, the greening of the grid? From there, we're going to identify a gap between projected emissions and the city's goal before developing an implementation plan for those actions and measures, hopefully, including a plan to monitor and track that progress going forward to ensure the longevity of that reduction plan. So again, for today, most of the work that's been done is that baseline inventory, particularly around the greenhouse gas emission sources that are listed for the greenhouse gas VMT reduction strategy. So those are going to be residential and vehicle miles traveled. And so we're going to talk today about a lot of that. I know there's a lot of interest in connecting those actions to things that the city is doing and talking about what the measures are going to be. And we're going to outline our process for collecting that input and doing stakeholder engagement when we get to that stage a little later on. So the greenhouse gas and vehicle miles traveled reduction strategy, the center of that nesting doll that we saw a little earlier on, is going to be the city's first dedicated planning effort to set actionable climate change goals. We're really excited about this process. These policies are going to be within the 2024 Comprehensive Plan, together with that climate change and resiliency element. The city is going to be able to address greenhouse gas emissions from these vehicle sources that we know are a very large emission category for the city. Going up a level just a little bit to that comprehensive plan update, we're going to be starting to target emissions that go beyond just that vehicle miles traveled category. Samamish, like much of the region, has dealt with a lot of unprecedented growth and change since the last major comprehensive plan update in 2016. The city's 2015 Comprehensive Plan Goal, EC7, of supporting regional efforts in mitigating and adapting to climate change is going to acknowledge the need to address climate change, and that's something that we really hope to help address in this comprehensive plan update. Finally, we get to the Climate Action Plan. So a climate action plan broadly is a strategic framework for measuring, planning, and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Cities use climate action plans as customized roadmaps for making informed decisions about how to achieve the largest and most cost-effective emissions reductions in line with other municipal goals. At a minimum, climate action plans typically include an inventory of existing emissions, reduction goals or targets, and analyzed and prioritized reduction actions. Ideally, a climate action plan also includes an implementation strategy, as we saw in that process slide earlier on, which includes resources and funding mechanisms. They can also include components like resilient strategies, clean energy targets, and integrate things like economic and social goals. In this instance, we want to spend a little bit of time talking about where we see the Climate Action Plan going more broadly. Here, we can see an example from the city of Kenmore. So they're setting up targets in line with K4C. This is going to be used to track the city's progress over time. This particular figure illustrates the emissions path that Kenmore is currently on and the anticipated emissions reductions from federal and state policies, as well as the gap that remains to meet those reduction targets. So this teal section at the bottom is showing the space where the Climate Action Plan's actions or measures need to make up the difference between expected emissions and emissions goals. Once we have this kind of wedge, once we have that emissions projection into the future, we can start to talk about how we're going to address the gap. Usually, a city or municipality will identify some different focus areas to organize greenhouse gas mitigation and reduction strategies. This example is from the city of Bellevue, and you can see that they've chosen five categories. We think the city of Samamish already has a really strong start to developing some of these categories in previous work that you all have done. Finally, we get into measure development. This is usually one of the most in-depth, in-the-weeds portion of climate action planning. This is an example from the city of Issaquah, and you can see here that they have some of these different categories. They've got overarching goals. They have something specific to buildings and energy. They also have transportation and land use. This is one example. They have a few other categories, but I could only fit so many on a single slide. But you can see within each of those designated categories, they have targets and metrics, they have strategies, and they have key actions. And throughout the Climate Action Plan, there are pages that detail exactly what all of these actions mean. All right, getting into alignment. So this is another visual, kind of a tiered layer cake instead of those circles that we saw earlier. But this is meant to convey all of the different guidance that's currently available as we set out to do this climate action planning process. Puget Sound Regional Council, in its Vision 2050, provides a lot of resources and guidance for cities creating climate action plans. King County also provides some target-setting help. And within King County, there's a lot of information about different emission sources, and we can go off of examples in King County to figure out what type of methodology is going to keep us in line with other cities nearby. We also have guidance from K4C. We have some goal-setting provided by K4C that Samamish can use to tier off of and align. And finally, we get to the bottom, where we have the city of Samamish. There's a lot of previous work that the city of Samamish has done around climate change that we want to make sure is carried forward into the Climate Action Plan. So you can see here, the Climate Action Plan and VMT grant is nested at the bottom of all of these tiers. So this is not a document that exists in a vacuum. It's something that is informed by a lot of really excellent work that has already been done at the regional and county level. Speaking of the regional and county level, to spend a little bit of time digging into what that alignment looks like, we wanted to name a few really excellent resources that we have been involved with, or excuse me, that we have been integrating, relying on, looking at as we develop the Climate Action Plan and particularly as we collect data and start to process that data. King County has a lot of public resources available. Their Climate Action Planning Toolkit is particularly excellent, and they've done a lot of work with K4C to get that published, to make sure that these things are working together and speaking to each other. King County also has a detailed greenhouse gas inventory. That's baseline, or excuse me, they have a version in 2015, and it's updated in 2017. This provides guidelines to conduct your cap consistent with other cities in the area. And this is really, really valuable because it provides us methodology to move forward and make sure that we're in alignment. Puget Sound Regional Council also has some really excellent guidance. There's a lot of emissions reduction analysis and visualization, and their Passport to 2024 Climate provides resources for cities making climate action plans. Finally, we have K4C, and I think that this is a really, really important one. K4C sets the goal of reducing carbon emissions of 50% by 2030 and 95% by 2050. They compare this to a 2007 baseline. So that high-level goal is what we want to align with in the city of Samamish, that 50% by 2030 and 95% by 2050. And finally, getting to the bottom of the layer cake we saw earlier, we have goals and prior work from the city of Samamish. In particular, the city of Samamish has set a lot of goals around water, helping neighborhoods, creating and protecting natural habitats, and we expect these to move forward and be visible in alignment with the Climate Action Plan. So what does all of this mean for Samamish? It means that we want to achieve countywide greenhouse gas emissions of at least 50% by 2030 and 95% by 2050. This is in line with K4C. The city of Samamish can help contribute to that goal. Finally, there's a policy commitment to incorporate and adopt policies that support reduction goals. And we want to make sure that the Climate Action Plan does that, continues to push those initiatives forward. So taking us forward a little bit more, this slide should look familiar. This is the process that helps us complete the Climate Action Plan. Knowing the target that we're aligning to, we can start to get into the baseline inventory.
Okay, I can take it from here, Alexis. So diving into the baselining a little bit more, want to give some framing around how we chose to do this baseline and then what baseline emissions actually look like for the city of Samamish. So taking a look at methodology, we use the greenhouse gas protocol as our standard for the ways to measure emissions and look at emissions. This was taken from the King County greenhouse gas inventory, ensuring that we align with them. So you can see on the right-hand side, we have identified the geographic plus inventory as the boundary that we will be using for this analysis. So that includes- So that includes all greenhouse gas emissions from activities within King County, or in this case, within the city of Samamish, including transportation, buildings, processes, waste, and agriculture. And we, when we refer to the geographic plus boundary, um, that indicates that we are including electricity within the scope boundary. So materiality assessment. As a first step, it's important to identify the emission sources that are material to the city of Samamish, or in other words, that are the most relevant or the most important to the city. So in the column in the left-hand side, you'll see all of the, um, potential emission sources that are in a city or a jurisdiction. And then whether we have identified those as material or relevant to the city of Samamish, and then a little bit of an explanation as to why that is. So you'll see we have three main emission sources that we are focusing on. That's in boundary, transportation, sta- stationary fuel combustion, and grid-supplied electricity. Same information, just a little bit of a different visual. Um, we're focusing where you see the scope one boundary within this teal box here. These are all of the categories that are typically considered within a geographic boundary. And the difference where you see the red Xs is what has been established as material to Samamish. So although you may have some of those categories around waste and wastewater agriculture processes, they do not make up the most significant, significant portion of emissions. Those are coming from stationary fuel in boundary transportation, as well as the grid-supplied energy and electricity. So again, the material emission sources that we're focused on for the city of Samamish's baseline are transportation, building and industry electricity, and building and industry natural gas and oil. These are making up our geographic plus climate action plan categories and baseline. So we'll move now into the actual data we collected. Um, this was a process involving ourselves, the city, and a few different stakeholders that you see over here on the left-hand side of the table. Um, these stakeholders were identified as being critical to understanding Samamish's footprint, the makeup of the city, and providing great insight into the data availability and what we may expect. We also had a chance to talk to, um, Puget, Puget Sound Energy, the King County, um, folks, as well as K four C and Puget Sound. And to get insights into approach and the best ways to align with the climate action and sustainability planning involved, um, in the region at large. So conducting the inventory, again, are three categories on the left-hand side. The activity data is the actual data from the city of Samamish collected that we were able to calculate emissions with. So for transportation, that was the daily and annual vehicle miles traveled within the city. And then building i- and industry electricity, as well as natural gas and oil, that was taken from Puget Sound Energy. Um, this data is the same data that was used in the King County reporting and Puget Sound Regional. Uh, so you'll see the note on the interim data. We are waiting on the final pieces of data from Puget Sound Energy, but since you all exist within King County, that has provided so many of the great resources that Alexis outlined. We were able to compare that data and expect to verify it against the data received shortly from Puget Sound Energy, but we would consider that we have a accurate rep- representation of annual energy usage, um, within the city of Samamish. So taking a look at the transportation baseline, again, activity data we examined was the daily vehicle miles traveled. Um, that was provided by the Samamish Public Works contracted V M T engineers. And that was looked at in conjunction with the Puget Sound regional data, as well as the King County emissions inventory. Again, to confirm that our boundary was in alignment, that we were not undercounting or overcounting any of our emission sources. So getting into a few of the assumptions and framing the way that these vehicle miles traveled and and emissions generated were looked at. This was a calculation performed by Transportation Solutions. This is a group that has worked with the city on different environmental impact reports and traffic counts in the past. Uh, so we partnered with them on this, uh, calculation for emissions from vehicle miles traveled. And these emissions were based on counts during peak P M, um, vehicle counts um, from certain points throughout the city. And the counts were split into the town center and now non-town center emissions. And the emissions analysis u- utilized no action alternative when we're looking at future projections into twenty twenty eight and twenty thirty-five. And you'll see the vehicle mode split that we have displayed here is very heavily ninety-seven percent passenger vehicles or single occupancy cars. We have a little bit of heavy vehicles, so, um, trucks and industrial vehicles. And then a very small portion of transportation made up from pedestrian and bicycle usage. So taking a look at the emissions, the metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent generated from transportation. You can see sixty-four thousand is the total, uh, metric tons generated from transportation. And you can see the split between town center and non-town center. Uh, greatest majority coming from the non-town center or the residential regions, um, within the city of Samamish. And then on the lower graph on the page, you can see the greenhouse gas emissions during a peak week- weekday P M hour count in our twenty sixteen baseline and the modeled twenty twenty-eight and twenty thirty-five years. And you can see those emissions gradually increasing over time. So looking at, um, those emissions gradually increasing over time, we wanted to start to visualize how that increase um, looks compared to those K four C goal alignments. So you can see both of the lines starting um, from our baseline one hundred percent and how the V M T projections currently with no action taken are s- starting to increase gradually. While the K four C goal alignment, of course, is going down over time. And as we continue to work with the city of Samamish, what we'll be focusing on is looking at ways to decrease that line and, and meet the K four C goal alignment through different strategies that will ultimately make up the difference in emissions reduction and, and keep you all on target for those, um, greenhouse gas reductions. So moving into the built environment electricity emissions. Um, these emissions are from the kilowatt hours consumed across the city that are purchased from Puget Sound Energy. Uh, so we, we spoke to Puget Sound Energy to collect this data, as well as, um, the King County folks and, and some of those resources provided to get an understanding of the electricity used at the residential as, as well as the commercial core within Samamish. And then overview of natural gas and oil, so came also from Puget Sound Energy. And oil use will be referencing the U S Energy Information Administration. So this is making up the natural gas, uh, usually in home heating and appliances across both residential and commercial usage. And same sto- stakeholders were involved in this process since both of those, um, energy sources are delivered from Puget Sound Energy. So looking at the energy source mix, we wanted to give a comparison here of what that electricity makeup is looking like. On the left, you'll have Puget Sound Energy who supplies all, uh, electricity within the city of Samamish. You can see that there is a mixture of both renewable clean power and, um, non-renewable sources such as coal and natural gas within this mix. As to compared to the visual on the right showing Seattle City Light that has a vast majority of electricity made up from hydro power. That's just something to keep in mind. As Alexis mentioned earlier, we'll be looking at our strategies for reduction in conjunction with the greening of the grid. So over time, as Puget Sound Energy may shift this mix-up that you see on, on the left and shift towards more renewable sources, that will be taken into consideration and s- to see how that may ef- affect overall emissions of the city. So looking at the electricity breakdown, you can see in the pie chart on the left that electricity is um, by a slight amount, the majority of emissions, uh, from the city of Samamish. You can see another, the top bar graph here that most of those emissions are coming from the residential sector uh, with a smaller portion coming from commercial. So the top graph representing the carbon dioxide equivalent emissions from electricity and the bottom graph representing actual electricity usage in kilowatt hours. Again, with the vast majority coming from residential and a smaller portion coming from commercial uses. Looking at our natural gas emissions, once again, coming from Puget Sound Energy as a source. So total of a hundred and twenty-four thousand and five metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent coming from natural gas. A similar split here, even a bit more dramatic between residential and commercial. Again, majority of those emissions coming from, um, residential sectors of, of Samamish. And this bottom graphic, just a comparison of electricity and natural gas when we're thinking of the energy profile within the city of Samamish, um, this is the breakdown, um, that we have for you all. So a summary of the baseline altogether with those, uh, three primary material sources, emission sources that I just walked through, that is a grand total for calendar year twenty nineteen. Of three hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen metrics, uh, tons of C O two equivalent. And you can see how they stack up in the bar graph here. Um, something just to call attention to with the baseline and, and why we like to present this information is that the, this baseline understanding and understanding where your emissions are being made up from will inform a lot of our decisions around strategies we may target and areas we may focus when we're putting into the climate action plan. And of course, we will consider those other factors that we talked about, um, of existing Samamish goals such as nature and water, but looking at reducing actual carbon emissions. This gives us insight into where to focus and gives us a starting point so that any future measures that are implemented um, can be ac- accurately captured as those emissions start to go down over time.
Wonderful. Thank you, Erin. Uh, we're going to spend a little bit of time here at the end of the presentation talking about next steps. Overall, want to chat a little bit here about project phases. So right now, we are firmly in phase one, that baseline analysis. That's a lot of the work that we've been doing so far. We've been able to measure a lot of Samamish's emission sources, and we're going to start identifying opportunities for impact. We're also evaluating regional emissions frameworks to get an understanding of where Samamish fits within the broader context of the area, but also understand how we can be in alignment with partners on this. Uh, from here, we're going to start moving into measure development. And again, I think this is the part where you get a lot of input. There's a lot of community workshops during this phase. This is where we identify reduction measures that are going to help us stay in line with those commitments can fit K four C and help us to reduce those emissions, uh, and that last wedge, uh, that we're looking for to achieve that long-term goal. Finally, once we've done all of that, once we've collected input from the community, we've brainstormed all of these measures. We're going to put it all into the final cap report. That report is going to go through a formal adoption process uh, for the climate action plan itself, based on all of that feedback, based on the calculations that support um, those measures helping us reach that goal. One other thing I want to point out here is that as we go through this greenhouse gas and V M T grant, excuse me, the greenhouse gas V M T grant and comprehensive plant integration process is going to be happening mostly at the beginning here, the city of Samamish Climate Action Plan, because it's integrating pieces from both the comp plan and the G H D V M T reduction strategy is going to be slowly rolling and picking up some steam as we come through this summer. And to get a little bit more into the weeds here, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time getting into all of the details on this slide, but I think it's really real helpful to understand what kind of timeline we're working with. You know, in particular, I think backcasting with this sort of project is always really helpful. We have the goal, um, to adopt the final city of Samamish Geo Plus Climate Action Plan by December of this year. So this is overall a pretty compressed timeline for a project of this scale. But as you can see here, we're working right now to finalize our baseline with that greenhouse gas and V M T element. Uh, including data from Puget Sound Energy. Next, we're going to start focusing on identifying and socializing measures that reduce greenhouse gas emissions from V M T and start to pick up on those measures that are going to be integrated into the comp plan. Getting more into April and May, we're going to be socializing the greenhouse gas and V M T reduction strategy itself and beginning stakeholder engagement for the broader climate action plan, which is going to include measures that go beyond reducing vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions associated with V M T. Getting into June and July, this is going to continue. We're going to be fine-tuning those measures before in the fall. Getting those strategies completely solid, developing the climate action plan final report, including measures, implementation and reporting and socializing for adoption through the winter to meet that December goal. With that, we're going to bring it back to the questions we asked at the beginning. If you have any questions about project scope or timeline, baseline data, why different sources are used where, make sure that timeline is clear and ask if there are any key challenges or opportunities that you think we should be aware of at this point. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, Alexis. Um, I have a feeling there might be some questions. So let's, uh, let's start out with that and uh, I might need some help if TC has questions or if I'm not able to see him. So who would like to go first? Really? Nobody's jumping in? Oh, John. Go ahead, John.
I'm on the end, so I can go first. You talked a lot about the comparative baseline. And I, believe me, I know how difficult your job is in terms of comparing communities and stuff like that. Um, is there any effort to look at just general per capita measures so we have some idea of where we are compared to Redmond, Kirkland, Issaquah? You know, and then there's other factors. We probably have much newer housing stock than some of our neighbors. And we also use a lot of third-party service providers. Eastside Fire and Rescue, King County Sheriff, water sewer districts, contractors, school districts, libraries. How do they all play in this comprehensive planning mode? Because their actions impact this stuff as well. Oh, and then do you have any information on the impact of work from home? You know, what happened prior to twenty twenty? And what does it look like going forward for even just some vehicle miles traveled? Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for that question. I can start, um, with some insights. Comparing to other cities is something that we can look into, especially since you all are a part of the K four C. And I think that per capita emissions is a great suggestion and, and idea, and that's something we're going to be looking to getting feedback on going forward and, and seeing how that information resonates uh, with the city at large and, and how that information can be applied. So I think, you know, the benefit of being within K four C is able to look at that data in different ways and, and see how different factors may be at play. Um, in terms of the jurisdictions within, we intend to keep stakeholder engagement going throughout this process. So that includes, you know, the, the school districts, water districts that you spoke of. We already talked to a few of the water districts and intend to keep those conversations open. Um, the other thing is the specific strategies. You know, we, we want to get this, this feedback and understanding of how uh, emissions are, are broken up and how they may impact different groups. And definitely apply our reduction strategies to be customized and specific to the groups within Samamish. In terms of the question about work from home, it's, it's a really good one. We understand that, um, you know, the makeup of Samamish indicates that work from home has impacted the structure, you know, not as many people are commuting, a lot more people are working from home. I think that's one reason. I think that's one reason that we've chosen to look at a 2019 baseline, but we'll be looking at future years, so looking at 2020 and 2021 when we do get that Puget Sound Energy data. So we can use that information to kind of inform the way that we apply our strategies and how that may shift emissions. And we also have a few different alternatives from the transportation engineers. So we will be considering the work from home, not only in our reduction strategies, but considering resiliencies and the way the community, you know, relies on the amenities that may contribute to the emissions footprint.
Commissioner Norman, go ahead.
Thank you. Excellent presentation, and the timeline is, you did a great job on outlining what the timeline is so that we can understand what to expect in the future. In looking at the material that was prepared, presented to us prior to the meeting, the K-4C had goals of 25% reduction in greenhouse gases below the 2007 levels by 2020. And I didn't see any of the charts on their material or yours that showed how did, how did everybody do? Is that, was that attained or close or not close at all? Or would you know?
I'm not sure if that information has, has been published, if they're still measuring the 2020 emissions and if that goal has been achieved, but it's something that we will want to consider in our strategies and can keep an eye out for.
Super. And I wondered how you're going to factor into your plan the, the growth in Sammamish, especially since we haven't finalized any kind of growth targets. You know, that's all kind of, that process is going along parallel to the work that you're doing. And so it seems to me it would make a big difference whether we built 2,000 new units or 5,000 new units over the timeframe that, that you're trying to achieve a reduction in greenhouse gases.
Right. Yeah, we're aware of the other plans that are going on in conjunction, the, the housing plan as well and how that may impact. So it's something we plan to work closely with as we develop our strategies and look at emissions, you know, on a per capita basis as, as population grows and manage it in conjunction with the housing plan.
Yeah, we'll be relying on the best data available from the city there, and all those projections will be included in the calculations that we do as we forecast greenhouse gas emissions into the future.
Sure. Okay. And I see number four on your slide, there was any key challenges or opportunities. I do think that what you mentioned about work from home is a, it's an interesting conundrum because it's going to be less vehicle miles traveled, but then the, you know, the heater's on and the air conditioning's on, and, and so will one really offset the other? You know, I don't know how that's all going to work. And the last point or suggestion is, when you look at vehicle miles traveled, there's diesel vehicles and gas vehicles and electric vehicles, and so I don't know how that mech, that mix works out in Sammamish currently and, and where it's trending one way or the other, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a really good point. You know, when we're talking about greenhouse gas emissions from vehicle miles traveled, you know, there's two parts of that equation, right? There's greenhouse gas emissions per mile traveled, which can vary a lot depending on the type of fuel use. We do have information on the type of vehicles, we have some insight into the kind of fuel. But in the other piece is the number, you know, so there's the emissions from each mile traveled, and that's something that in and of itself changes, right? When you have electric vehicles. And so in particular, if we're looking at that as a reduction strategy, that's something that we'll be able to determine emissions reductions from. So I think that that's a really, really good point, and we're going to start to calculate the impact of things like that as we put together these measures and forecasts for greenhouse gas VMT.
All right. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Yeah, Commissioner Briscoe, go ahead.
We have, we have a process here. So I have a few questions. First, on the scope, I'm trying to understand how the timeline fits in with the work we'll be doing around the comprehensive plan. I noticed that the phase two, you had three phases towards the end. Phase three went to having the Climate Action Plan. Phase two said, you know, comp plan. The way I interpret that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure I'm probably misunderstanding a little bit, is that what you're showing is some interaction where the progress we're making around comp plan will feed into some of the calculations and strategies related to the Climate Action Plan, and actually somewhat vice versa. But in the fact, those two will actually, in a way, be separate. We'll, we'll continue working on the comprehensive plan with some input from this, and then separately, there is a deliverable called the Climate Action Plan. Is, is that correct?
Yes. So the Climate Action Plan, I wonder if I can zip us all the way back up to those little nested circles. That's the one that really, I think, helps the most. I think one of the biggest differences is from a greenhouse gas calculation perspective is what's included, right? So for the Climate Action Plan, we're going to be looking at waste and city government operations, whereas in the comprehensive plan, we are looking at land use, buildings, and the, and the transportation and residential pieces that have been established already in the grant VMT and the comp plan. So the way we see it, because we're looking at different sets of emissions for each of these processes, we're going to have different strategies that build and are relevant to each one. Does that help eliminate?
Yeah, actually, that was, that was a good explanation, so I appreciate that. So I have, maybe it's a little bit of follow-up from Jerry's question, because that letter of commitment on the K-4C that talked about the 20, 2007 baseline and then the reductions from there, and you showed that from the city of Kirk, or not Kirkland, Kenmore. So not having that baseline, how do you set goals against that? It seems like we've got goals, you know, from K-4C, and we haven't measured our 2007 baseline to work against that.
Yeah.
So I'm confused by like what's been committed and what we're going to try to accomplish.
Yeah, understood. And as part of our process, you know, we, we wanted to ensure that same thing, you know, some of these jurisdictions, King County may have started this process a few years back with 2007. But one of the steps we did was reviewing the commitments and baseline years of the other cities within K-4C. And you don't see a consistent 2007 baseline throughout the cities that have committed. And there's a few different reasons for that. I think the primary reason being data availability. And so what, what's interesting about the K-4C commitment is that it is a commitment to reduce in line with that county-wide goal. But your baseline does not necessarily need to be that, that 2007. So the first step is getting the baseline that makes sense for Sammamish, which in this case has been identified to be 2019. But we, we can kind of pick the reduction strategies that are still in line with what K-4C is, is setting their goal to be in, in terms of reduction year over year, although we're moving from a different baseline, which that, the last visual from, I believe, the city of Kenmore, they have a, the same baseline of, of 2019. And you can see the way they've done it. They, they've applied the goals in this case to go from their 2019 baseline being best available data.
So then would we have, so that 2030, 50% reduction is out of K-4C?
That's correct. And in this case, I believe Kenmore has adopted this same reduction goal.
So then would Sammamish potentially be able to say, well, look at 50% reduction by 2035, since the starting point, the baseline is later than the 2007?
It's something that we can look at in terms of approach and, and strategies and an actual alignment. That's kind of one of the reasons we're noting it as alignment when we talk about our goal setting, because we have the opportunity to have slightly different goals than the years and percentages laid out by K-4C while still being in alignment. So some of those options and approaches and how different strategies may impact that reduction goal and year is something that we look to work with you all in, throughout engagement and outline different options and pathways for staying in line with K-4C.
Okay. Erin, thank you. That, I, I was wondering how rigorous those like dates and target reductions were. So it sounds like there could be some flexibility to move them forward or backward, as, as the case may be. You know, last question that you had, and last thing, I'll take my time on before moving on down our row here is, the, you know, challenges in Sammamish, because so much of the emissions are from residential. And, you know, we could advocate and, you know, kind of put in some incentives, but it's, it's more difficult than if you've got, you know, industry and so forth. So I could see that as, as something where, I know I would appreciate having some sense of, like through analysis and benchmarks, what can be accomplished through, you know, education and things like that that could help reduce, you know, the emissions from the residential area, because it is really going to be a very big driver for whether we can meet these kinds of goals or not.
I think that's a really good point, and as you see in our, you know, in the baseline that we put together, you can see that emissions from residential energy, sorry, so many slides. You can, but you can see that difference, right? So I think that that makes a lot of sense, and I think it's going to be really, really valuable to consider all of that when we start to put together those measures and action items to help reach those goals. Stakeholder engagement is going to include socializing these strategies to test impact with adoptability. So we're going to be looking at the kind of measures, we will be quantifying the impact of those measures, socializing them to get input. And so I think that's a really valid point, and we're really excited for that part of the process.
Right. Hey, well, I, you have that slide up. It might help to separate, I, I like the way this is divided, but also if it could show residential versus the non-residential consumption for each of the, you know, transportation, electricity, and natural gas, it might be helpful in, in sort of sorting through what could be accomplished and, you know, where we need to put the levers to accomplish our goals. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Bosworth.
Thank you. To build on Commissioner Briscoe, who was just speaking, the, the challenge, I was also thinking about, you know, for the residential, sometimes we're planning, you know, so it's really easy to think, oh, I'm going to get an electric car, and you can go online and, and look at the specs and get really excited about it. And you, you tend to do that over a longer period of time, and then, or you could be like me last week and realize you need a new furnace ASAP. And so you start calling people and you start learning, you, you, you think, I want a heat pump. And then all these people come out, and I have to say, it was actually a really fun experience, despite it being a little stressful, to learn all about heat pumps and how they work and the different options and stuff. And so education is my point. Those are education for the choices that we have to generally sometimes make under duress versus the longer ones. So, and, and things like, as we were thinking about it, you know, is, are there ways to calculate? Yeah, if you do a heat pump with a backup gas furnace, which you hopefully never will use, your gas will go down, your gas consumption will go down a lot. How much will your electricity go up? And overall, how much more efficient are you going to be? So definitely think it's a, a challenge to help residential figure out what to do in those situations. Education would be great.
Absolutely. We think educational programs are probably going to be a really interesting and productive strategy to put in there. And you're right, people do tend to replace equipment under duress, and I think that where we can create some structural incentives to, you know, if you own a building and you're replacing something not under duress, create reasons to, to put in something a little bit more efficient, that's going to be great. And I think the Climate Action Plan is going to really, really excel at helping create those structures and incentives, right? We can create educational programs that help people understand down the road what, you know, kind of what their options are when a moment like that happens.
Cool. That would be great. And then for the other question about baseline information, I noticed buses weren't on the, in that pie chart for, for movement, I guess. And so I was wondering if, if there's any, if, if there's a desire or, or need to get data from, say, King County Metro to understand how many people are getting on and off within city limits, as well as schools, you know, how many kids are taking the bus versus parents driving and stuff like that, if that's helpful to measure or understand at the beginning if it's available, and then figure out, you know, where it should be or where we are in the future.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea for looking into, you know, an additional layer of granularity in how this, you know, and how, where these emissions are coming from. So talking to some of those external stakeholders that are in charge of the bus routes as well as the schools, I think is something that we would like to do in our stakeholder engagement, just to kind of refine the strategies. You know, the more we understand the split, the more we can make strategies that are applicable and, and will work for Sammamish. This, you know, data split was based on the transportation engineer that, that we worked with and our understanding of kind of the city makeup and, you know, the, the most accurate baseline that we were able to create. But I believe, you know, adding in those different layers and considerations, it, you know, will, will help to refine our, our strategies even more. So it is a possibility that we can look into, absolutely.
Cool. Thank you.
Commissioner Mato.
Thank you. I, on the, thank you for the presentation. It was very great and very easy to understand, and the slides were very clear, so I appreciate the time and effort that went into that. I want to go back to the 2020 reduction targets, and I know you don't have the answer about whether we hit it or not. But understanding going forward for our strategies, what we tried or didn't try and what worked and didn't work will be really helpful as we go in and make this plan. So if there is a timeline for King County releasing that data, I think it would be helpful to know. I was curious if the vehicle miles traveled that you had calculated were only within the city of Sammamish or all sourced from the city of Sammamish, as in like, are we counting trips to Seattle, for example, from Sammamish as hours?
So the way that we drew the boundary is only emissions within the city of Sammamish. And, you know, there are a few different ways to do it, and, and the reason we chose this approach is because of the approach that King County took and many of the neighboring cities within King County also took. So, you know, within K-4C, the approach is that everyone is measuring the emissions only within their city boundaries to make up the entire, you know, inventory of the county. So we were not counting trips to jurisdictions or places outside of Sammamish.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I just, that was one of my questions, and since it's right here, I want to ask. So does that mean that all of the highway traffic through Issaquah on I-90 is counted in Issaquah's numbers? And I'm curious about that, because, you know, there's a, Sammamish is much different, but there are some trips inbound, there are some, there are mostly outbound. But the, are we counting vehicle miles? Is there a way that the data is representative of all vehicles, whether they're starting here or returning here? If they're traveling through, if they're, I guess I'm confused about how that works.
Yeah, and, and that would get a bit more into the details of the way the transportation engineers did the counts. They took traffic counts at, during PM hours at a few different intersections throughout the city of Sammamish. So it's kind of the most accurate way to capture emissions within the city, but there's no perfect way of, of determining where those vehicles are going. It's just the most reliable approach to capturing emissions that are within the geographic boundary of the city.
Okay. Thanks.
I was wondering if you could expand on the PM peak counts that you used and how that was used? And, yeah, that's the question is, how, how did you use the peak PM traffic counts?
Yeah, so that's a question that the transportation engineers from Transportation Solutions would probably be able to provide a bit more insight into. But at a high level, they took the counts of vehicles traveling through certain set intersections throughout the cities and applied a factor to estimate what that would mean for the number of vehicles throughout the day at both peak times and, and non-peak times, and then extrapolated that to account for annual emissions, you know, You know, considering, uh, weekday peaks, non-peaks, as as well as weekends, and applied that to a factor, um, to estimate the annual emissions.
So not that long ago, the city went through a pretty sizable traffic counting exercise. And I'm curious why we didn't actually use the raw data that we have for this rather than trying to project that. And is it the same traffic engineer that did the counts a couple of years ago that we used here for this process? Or was it a different one who just took the raw numbers from peak PM?
My understanding is it is the same engineer, but I I might need Evan or David to confirm that.
I'll just say, I don't know offhand, but we can track it down with the Public Works Department and, uh, follow up via email on how, uh, which models and and traffic counts were used.
Okay, yeah, and there's, um, and if there was like a a rebound calculation from or not from COVID trap, after COVID traffic, right? Because there was an assumption in the last EIS on, you know, decreased traffic based on after COVID, um, patterns, so. Okay, and then, um, I think you covered this, but I don't recall exactly on, um, when you were counting vehicle miles traveled, traveled, if you went in and grabbed the difference between a gas vehicle versus hybrid versus all-electric.
Yeah, so for this, uh, calculation, the engineer just used a standard number for all passenger vehicles. So that, um, granularity of vehicle type was not captured in in this calculation.
Okay. Not that I want to make it harder for us to reach our goals, but Sumamish has a really, I think, high adoption rate of fancy new, high-efficiency and electric vehicles. So I don't know that. Maybe it's better for us to just assume that everyone's driving a gas guzzling car so that we can eat more easily hit our targets later. But I don't know that that accurately represents what Sumamish looks like.
So I'm 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 gonna jump in here. I'm listening in the background. I appreciate the conversation. Really, the only way to start to get at that data is to do a license plate study, um, which is a a major undertaking. Um, it's not something you you really take on unless you you have a real big problem. I know we have a problem here. We're trying to solve, but I don't know that we have the capacity to take on a license plate study that would distinguish between, um, the number of, you you'd have to then go into the registration database to find out the vehicle type. And then you could start to get at that granular level and look at what types of vehicles are driving on the roads and what the what the percentages are. And then you'd have statistics around that that you could apply. Otherwise, we're we're left with hose counts, um, which can't really discern between, um, a a different type of car or even really between a bus and a, um, and a, uh, a a car. You can count axles. And if you had, you know, three axles, then you could discern that that is a s- a truck or a a heavy heavyweight vehicle. But, you know, two axles, it's harder to tell. Um, regarding the the engineer, engineering firm, um, the engineering firm that was used here to support this was the same engineering firm that was used for the environmental impact statement, the Bluma EIS. Um, I don't know the data generation that you were referencing, if that was prior to that. There were two contracts prior to that that were being used. There was David Evans and Associates, as well as TSI, that were being used by Public Works. So we'd have to dig into that to tell whether or not that information was provided by David Evans or whether it was provided by Transportation Solutions.
Okay. So I guess the reason why, I I understand it might be a big process, but the reason why I think it matters is because every solution we come up with has a dollar figure attached to it that taxpayers are going to have to pay for. And, um, if we decide that we need to give a tax holiday for getting an electric vehicle delivered into Sumamish to increase, you know, th- there's a lot of different ways you can do that, but there's always a dollar figure attached to it for Sumamish taxpayers. So understanding where we're really at, I think, is important for coming up with real solutions to this challenge. And, um, so that's why, that's why I care about about that item. On slide thirty-five, there's a line graph that shows what appears to be, because it's a a small section, but relatively flat between twenty nineteen and then a sizable jump to twenty twenty-eight. And I'm curious, what is the, how that was calculated, that there was going to be a sizable increase in vehicle miles traveled within Sumamish over those eight years?
So to clarify, are you looking at the top darker green line?
Yeah, the projections with no action.
Yeah, so, um, that was the tied to the projections that the transportation engineer took. They looked at years twenty twenty-eight and twenty thirty-five. So we're we're just visualizing what, um, they are anticipating there. And I'm would need more details on, you know, what information they they took into consideration in in terms of population growth or or developments within the community. Um, yeah, that would, that would lead to that. Yeah, we don't, I don't think we know off the top of our heads, but we can find out from the BNC engineers.
Okay. And then I think my last item kind of reiterates what other some others said about counting on per capita basis. We have a sizable number of Sumamish homes that include many children or multi-generational households. So the efficiency of a high-efficiency, uh, natural gas furnace could be much greater than one in a different city with, uh, a single person living in it, if you think about it on a per capita basis. And on the, you know, someone mentioned single occupancy vehicles. There, many of them are probably hauling children around. And so how are we, I I don't think it's a fair calculation to just look at raw emissions or raw vehicle miles traveled without looking at it on a per per person basis. You know, because we're got a lot of people living in single homes, so. Um, and that's, that's all I've got.
Sure. Yeah, thank you for that comment.
TC, if you're, uh, if you're there, do you have any questions or comments?
I do. Can you go back one slide to slide thirty-four, please? Uh, I may have written down the wrong note here. Oh. Can you help me delineate town center versus non-town center? Are we talking about the town center project? Or are we talking about the center of Sumamish geographically?
My understanding from the transportation engineers is that the town center is looking at any commercial areas, um, within Sumamish.
Okay. I guess my, my confusion is around the fact that we have a project called the Town Center, which is more than just a commercial area. And we have multiple commercial areas that are geographically distributed from each other across the town. Right? So if I were to call it out, where QFC is and where Safeway is, those are the two biggest commercial areas. And they're a couple of miles apart. So if you're just driving back and forth between those, you can rack up a lot of miles. But I was just trying to understand what that was.
Yeah, and we can we can rename this distinction and and provide more details into exactly how the transportation engineer made that distinction and and what exactly is considered in both of those categories.
Okay, yeah. I I think there's, there's a tremendous amount of data here, and I think that you guys have done a really good job of, it capturing that data, encapsulating it, and then, you know, trying to to break it down into something that's human readable for folks who are not uh, engineers or statistical analysis experts. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anything else, TC?
Uh, that's about it.
Okay, thanks. I'll go next. I have a, I have a few questions. One of the things that I'm a little confused by, and, you know, when I originally, um, was introducing this, I said, you know, there's a quite of a word soup here or whatever that we're putting together. But one of the things I I don't quite understand, you had the schedule shown, and we're working on the greenhouse gas emissions reduction plan. And it and it talks about the comp plan scope kind of being in parallel with that, um, which leads me to believe that the element of our comp plan is only going to include our greenhouse gas emission strategy. Now, I don't believe that's true, but it's, it's a little bit confusing to me, so perhaps it is to others as well, what our comp plan element will actually include. So if what we're saying is that the greenhouse gas emission reduction strategy is one element of that section of the comp plan, i- if that's true, then I would suggest that we be, um, extremely explicit and clear that that's the case, that the comp plan element includes multiple other things that are not part of the greenhouse gas emission reduction strategy. Because the way it looks, it kind of, I think it's, it has the potential to confuse people.
Um, one question I have is, uh, which of the graphics you're referencing that you found a little?
Yeah, it was one that had a couple of bars at the bottom.
I think that's down here. Let me find that. This one?
Right there, yeah.
Okay, so you're saying that this makes it seem like, yeah, I I'm I'm tracking here. So you're saying that this makes it seem like the comprehensive plan element isn't going to include things that aren't included in the GHG.
Yeah. And and remember that our, that this element of our comp plan is essentially going to be new. I mean, it's gonna, the things that are going to be in it are going to be new. Um, and so I think it's just important to be clear that what we're doing here is not the, just the, what's going to go into the comp plan element. There's a whole bunch of other things, I assume, as well. So let, I just encourage being clear about that because it, it makes me a little uncomfortable. So moving off from that, let's see. Uh, I do think I would encourage, and you you know, you saw some of that in the discussion tonight, but I would encourage that we be thoughtful in how we talk about, um, vehicles, you know, combustion engine versus electric and how that works. Because if you, I think that what what Commissioner Amato was getting at is if we have a strategy, which all of us assume we're going to talk about this in the future, in the weeds, is that if we have a strategy that says we anticipate twenty percent of the fleet is going to convert over from from, uh, ICE engine to electric vehicles, so then we can see a reduction amount. And ICE engines generate this much greenhouse gas based on twenty-two miles per gallon. And the electric vehicles then are using the residential electric load from Puget Sound Energy. But what greenhouse gas level does that create and what will be in the future? There's just some, some in the weeds details about that that I assume that we will have a discussion about. And I think it'll be important to kind of keep everybody between the rails on on that because it does get, you know, into the, into the specifics. And and I guess one thing I'd say related to that is, um, when you look at these graphs, what's interesting to me is that we will, we will easily auger in on vehicles and vehicle miles traveled because we were told to do that by the state, basically. But in reality, if we make a forty percent improvement on our vehicle emissions, um, which we probably can do and will do, we're ma- we're barely scratching the surface on the overall greenhouse gas emissions for the city. So I I hope that we, I'm also expressing a hope that we will recognize, uh, a way to evaluate the effort versus the value as we proceed through this discussion. Because there are things that we could do that will seem like a great idea and the value they provide may be minimal, and we're missing the train going by on something that's way more valuable.
I I think that's such a good and critical point when we're talking about climate action planning in particular. And I'm looking for a slide, but, you know, that's, that's part of what I love about this wedge analysis, um, so much, right? Is that we're going to calculate the impact of these proposed measures. And so, you know, in the climate action plan and as we're socializing those measures, we're going to have information on, you know, here are the greenhouse gas emissions associated with it. We're going to talk a little bit about the costs associated with it. Often, there are co-benefits, right? So something maybe is a little more expensive than we like, but has really important co-benefits. And so we want all of that information to be available when we're at that stage in the process. And I completely agree. I think the thing that is most valuable about a climate action plan is that it can change things upstream, right? And so you can look at those pieces of the pie that are going to be really, really big, and you can target and prioritize those. And so I hear you loud and clear. That's really important to us.
The next one is more of a, probably my interest than than some, but, um, we still do have a fair amount of construction and development that goes on in Sumamish. Nothing like what happens in Bellevue or Seattle, but still a fair amount. And the the development that we have tends to be spread out a bit, residential neighborhoods and so forth. I'm curious if anybody out there is including that, uh, both the construction phase as well as the embodied carbon in what gets built as part of this analysis. And maybe what you'll say is it's less than point two percent, so it's not worth talking about. And that would be great. I just don't have a sense of whether that activity and what we're creating is actually worth talking about and whether it contributes or not.
I would say with that, um, that has to do with the way that the boundary was drawn. So you can say, see, um, grayed out here, some things that are not considered within our geographic plus boundary and would be considered in scope three. So if a city were to be doing an inventory boundary, um, that those are things that would be considered. So those are things that, you know, technically contribute to a a activities that that may be related to the city of Sumamish. But they're not necessarily considered within the scope one. And and again, the reason that we drew the boundary this way is because of the guidance from King County and the ways that the K four C is recommending boundaries, um, for our climate action plan.
Got it. I'll just remain curious. The last thing you asked about challenges and the one that came to mind, which others have sort of touched on, but, uh, I think that in the time horizons that we're talking about, now, maybe the twenty fifty time horizon is different, but some of the shorter time horizons, it's, uh, it's a challenge in my mind to think about all of the natural gas burning equipment that we have, not furnaces and and water heaters and residential situations. And all of the schools, I'm sure, have natural gas boilers, heating their school, heating the buildings. And, you know, a lot of that equipment lasts thirty years, forty years, patched up fifty years. It's difficult for me to imagine how much of that will actually come to the point of end of life cycle and get replaced in some of these shorter time horizons. And when I see the contribution of natural gas to our emission profile, that makes me concerned about how much we can actually make a difference there. So I I, to me, that feels like a challenge or a difficult thing to to figure out. And since you asked for a suggestion of a challenge, that one to me is is a, feels like a big one.
Yeah, I think you're very correct in that. And I think that's something we see a lot of cities grappling with. So, um, we understand. We're looking forward to drafting those measures and getting your input on those ideas.
That's it for me this time. Uh, John, did you have something?
Yeah, follow-up question. And it's sort of an aggregation of what others have been talking about. You didn't, the presentation's been great, great information, well done. It seems like, and I didn't realize this until tonight, PSE's mix of energy generation for electricity is not that clean. So are there assumptions built into projections that they're going to get greener? Because, for example, if you swap out a gas furnace for, um, a heat pump, you're still using somewhat dirty energy. You know, you might gain some efficiency and lower CO2, but perhaps not as much as you thought because the energy generation isn't that clean. So how does that? I mean, if we do nothing and PSE gets a lot greener, does that really help? Or how's that going to wo- work in the projections?
Yeah, it is something that is considered in in projections. The State of Washington has a a Clean Energy Transformation Act requiring all electric utilities to eliminate coal-fired energy from state portfolios by twenty twenty-five and become a greenhouse gas neutral by twenty thirty. So that is something considered in the projections and, um, looking at how the electricity that you're burning as you may be switching over from those natural gas appliances to electricity, how they are, um, becoming cleaner over time. And to illustrate that a little bit more, um, I I keep going back to this wedge. I, I keep going back to this wedge chart, but it's my favorite thing in the world. You can see here that this has state-related building standards, federal fuel economy, Clean Energy Transportation Act that Erin was just referencing. So all of those measures are going to be included in the projections and hopefully visualized like this, so that we really understand what kind of impacts they're having and what kind of impact is left for the city.
Thank you. Anyone else have a follow-up? Commissioner Amato?
Just an encouragement for the city or our consultants to, I know the data is available for the public, but really make it easily available for the public on the raw data. We have a lot of very highly motivated, especially high school students on this topic, who are very good with data science, who would love to dive into this and might bring a different perspective and enhance the data we have that we would find super valuable. So having that available for them, or even adults who wanna mess around with the data would be, I think, super helpful during this exercise.
Sure. Yeah, and I think that transparency and disclosure is a really important part of this. And that's how we were able to tear off of other organizations and incorporate their methodology into what we've done here. I will say for any teenagers in the audience who are curious right now, King County and PSRC do have a really, really cool wedge analysis tool that has a lot of data available. So this is at both the county and city level. So I'd really recommend checking that out if you need to know something today. Since, you know, our results won't be ready for a little while.
I see a future meeting where we have wedge salads.
We should bring them next time.
Okay, who else has follow-up questions or comments? Anyone? TC, I'll check on you since I, I can't see you. Anything to follow up with questions or comments? I think he's shaking his head no. Oh, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, okay. I guess one of the things that I find interesting, you know, like, I, I think it was Commissioner Bosworth was talking about, you know, a, a decision to make an upgrade in a time of stress. You know, this last year, I just, I had to re-insulate my house. And, you know, there are some great programs out there, you know, from P, PSE to, to offer incentives to do some of this. But I wonder, you know, as we try and drive towards a more efficient landscape, can, could the city take on, you know, something where, where they're reaching out to, you know, homeowners of older properties? You know, say in a year, your house is 40 years old and probably not insulated up to par. Let us help, you know, subsidize or offset some of the cost of this, knowing that the long-term benefit is a more energy-efficient home that generates, or that consumes less resources, right? So I mean, it's, it all kind of trickles down, because a lot of this stuff, I think, as we really look at how we can deal with some of this, falls on a lot of individuals to take action, right? So, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I'm just trying, trying to find different ideas, right?
Yeah, absolutely. That brainstorming process is the beginning to that measure creation. You know, in particular, in terms of what kind of programs to see can create, you know, David, maybe you have some comment there, but we're willing to put a lot of ideas on the table.
Yeah, I, you know, there, there are cities, Bellevue, for example, that have programs that offer very low rate financing to help you make those improvements to your home, especially in, in times of need, right? You know, there isn't always a perfect time to re-insulate your home or replace the siding or replace the roof. And, you know, not, not everyone has $20,000 in cash sitting around waiting to do that. So there are programs available, and we do have some options we could look at in partnering with, with various programs. It's a great idea. I also want to note that that does blend nicely in with some of the housing conversations we're gonna be having in preserving existing housing stock. And homeowner maintenance programs are part of preserving existing housing stocks. So you're gonna start to see some themes emerge as we go through our comprehensive plan update on topics like this. So these are the types of, you know, thinking, outside-the-bonics thinking, creative thinking that are really helpful. So thank you for that type of idea.
Yeah, I know that, I, I think just to kind of follow up on what you were saying, David, you know, PSE has an in-home analysis tool, where they will send, I think it's like an energy advisor or something out. And, you know, they look in their, look in the attic and look under your house and see if your insulation's up to par. And they, you know, walk around and, and look at your lights and figure out if you're still using incandescence versus compact forest. And, and they make a lot of these recommendations. And it's, it's a no-cost service to, to, to the folks that, that choose to subscribe to it. And I wonder, you know, could we do like a, like a marketing blitz and just let people know about programs that are already there? That all, all you have to do is pick up the phone. I don't know, I, I get a lot of stuff in the mail and, you know, Renewal by Anderson, they're, they're all, all over my mailbox, because they're trying to sell me something. But, you know, maybe this energy advisor thing might, might help us get there.
And I, I think our hopes are that in the long term, after finishing the VMT GHG work, after merging that into the comp plan process and building out a climate action plan, that then the city has now a newly created position that is in environmental sustainability, the Natural Resources and Environmental Sustainability Coordinator position that was added for '23. And that's going to be, it's in the city manager's office, and it will be going out for recruitment here fairly soon. And the idea is that that individual could take over implementation at that level on the, you know, the outreach level and working on programs like that and working with some sort of environmental services commission, if there is one of those created in the long run, that could continue to operate that. So what we're doing is we're trying to put in place the groundwork so that that program can take off. And we, we ultimately will probably splice that off from our department, because it's not something we're staffed or equipped to manage in the long run. But we're hopeful to get through this program here and then, and, and be, be set with our direction on, on how to then implement. And that, that position would be responsible for overseeing that going forward.
Thanks, David. Erin and Alexis had one more question for you. There was a slide that showed, I believe it was secondary power generation or something like that. And I, I think there was a comment that was made that it was something like generators or...
Was it? Erin, does that sound familiar to you?
Well, I, I actually, I think I kind of took it away from the, the, the box that had like the five things in it, and then the one thing that was on the side. I'm doing a very articulate job of describing what I saw, so.
Oh, um, box with five, was it, was it the?
Like in the scope, out of the scope type of thing?
Wow, okay.
Twenty-seven, I'm guessing.
There we go, okay.
It was a thunderdome.
Okay, here we go. So, you have stationary fuel combustion limit listed in scope. And one of the things that I kind of started thinking about was, you know, Sammamish is rather prone to, you know, getting power outages in certain areas. And what does the, you know, emissions of all of the people running generators contribute to that? And is there a good argument or a good set of facts that we can derive about saying, hey, if you were to underground these utilities and eliminate power outages, what kind of emissions offset would we get by people not having to run their generators and number of hours or why number of days?
Yeah, I think with residential generators, that's a tough one to collect data on. Erin, correct me if I'm wrong. So in terms of, you know, calculating the emissions impact of, you know, undergrounding, which is, falls within PSE's jurisdiction, if I'm not mistaken, I think that's something that we could look into. I think it's a little bit of a more challenging measure to quantify as far as they go. But there's definitely an argument for, you know, increased resiliency through things like solar and batteries as well. If we're looking for different ways to have resiliency to grid issues and outages. And that's definitely an issue increasingly. And so there are a lot of different options we, we can look at that'll help address that. I don't know if Erin, you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, just that it, it is difficult to quantify, as Alexis noted. But we are able to quantify or illustrate emissions avoided if, you know, there were instances where PSE was able to underground some of those systems and we were able to shift away from some of those fuel combustion sources. You know, someone noted that, that part of the emissions footprint seemed the most concerning, because it, it is limiting in, in that sense. So I think, you know, making the case for reliable energy and, you know, that could be, or excuse me, reliable electricity can make a strong case for, you know, moving away from fu- fuel combustion.
Yeah, I mean, in, in my own personal experience, when the power goes out, if I walk out of my garage, it sounds like the Sturgis Motorcycle Rally. I mean, everybody's got a generator running, so.
So if, if, if I could jump in here, I, I seem to recall that there is some restriction on what we can as a city obligate PSE to pay for with regard to undergrounding and that the Washington UTC Utilities and Transportation Commission has some rules around what can be passed back to the ratepayer. And it's something we'd have to look into a little bit more. But I, I do also recall in some work that I had done previously with PSE that there, there are different levels of providing for resiliency in, in the underbuild and the delivery grid. And, and that comes in, in terms of redundancy in circuits, which we don't have now. So the easiest way for them to increase resiliency is for them to just double, double up on the circuits and feed the system from different ends. The, then, then the next level is, as, as you've suggested, is undergrounding the underbuild, which is a, is less expensive than the overbuild or the, the transmission. But the cost of that, there's a limit on how much of that can be passed back to the consumer. And there's a limit in which PSE then will want to invest, because it's a, it's a loss to them. So the city would then have to be willing to step in and pay that differential if we wanted to have them underground. It's an interesting one. I think it's worth looking into. It's something we can look at in the long run in terms of some of the other work that goes into the resiliency element in the comp plan. It may not happen with the climate action plan, but it would happen peripheral to that with regard to our resiliency planning related to climate change.
Yeah, fortunately, we have a pretty long time horizon to work on that one. TC, anything else?
No, sir.
Great, thanks. And I don't see any, oh, Carrie, did you have something? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you. I, I didn't acknowledge the presentation, but it was really fun to bounce through the slides back and forth through the whole Q and A. So great job. That was, you know, made it very interesting and helpful. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I will echo that as we close and say, Alexis and Erin, thank you. We'll look forward to the next time we get together and talk about some more of the details on this topic.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Next, I think on the agenda, we have our, which I'm sure will be an exciting presentation by Deputy Director Kelly Hildy, I think Kelly's doing it, of our 2022 year interview and 2023 work program. Am I right?
Actually, I'm going to pass this to Jackie, who will be providing you with the presentation on what we achieved in 2022 and what we're looking forward to in 2023.
Sorry, Jackie, I didn't realize it was you, so.
It did make me doubt myself for a second. I thought, oh, maybe I just did the whole presentation for nothing. Give me just a moment to share my screen here. And be patient with me. I haven't done a presentation on Zoom in a minute. So let me make sure I've got everything set up here. All right, well, good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Jackie Baleel. I'm a management analyst with the Long Range Planning Team in Community Development. We just wanted to take some time this evening to go over some of the accomplishments from 2022 and look ahead at 2023. And if I mess up the year at any point during this presentation, I apologize. I'm still not used to the year. As planning commissioners, you mostly interact with our long-range planning team here in D C D. But just a refresher on a few of the other teams that make up our department. Our admin team includes our front desk and contract management. They're the ones answering our resident inquiries, processing passports, taking payments, managing contracts, financial guarantees, and a whole lot more. We have our current planning team, which is separate from long-range planning. They focus their time on managing permits and development review for the city. They spend a lot of time responding to things like project guidance requests from the public, which is an online tool that residents can use to learn more about their home improvement projects, zoning setbacks, environmental restrictions on their properties, and just the overall permit process. The building services team is our inspectors and plan reviewers. Our inspectors spend most of their time out in the field, working with the public, communicating with residents. And our plan reviewers are not just reviewing their building plans, but also helping to educate their applicants during consultations and submittal appointments. Code compliance kind of speaks for itself. They are out investigating complaints and enforcing our city codes. And then we have our long-range planners, like myself, who do policy and regulations and special projects. The planning commission staff support is made up. It starts with Julian, who you all know as one of our front desk office assistants. He's our planning commission coordinator. He's joined by Evan Fisher, who's our senior management analyst, and he's the planning commission liaison. David and Kelly are deputy and director of our department, joined by Miriam, who heads up the long-range planning team as our planning manager. And then Sarah Astiri and I, along with Evan, are our management analysts. So we wanted to put some numbers together from 2022, because these are fun to look at as a whole, to look at the city's totals for the year. And I won't read all through the, all through these numbers, but this presentation will be available after the meeting as well, if you'd like to look back. But a lot of these projects and cases are very time-consuming. It's a lot of hours spent back and forth with residents or poring over paperwork. So these numbers are something that we are pretty proud of. There are a couple small notes on there, just to mention. We changed our tree permitting process a little bit this year. So the tree permits issued looks like a lot less than previous years. So we wanted to emphasize that now multiple types of trees can be removed under one permit, whereas in the past, they required multiple permits. And then code cases is something also very time-consuming. And you can see the top types of code violation cases. It's a lot of cases, illegal science removal and unpermitted structures. Again, this presentation can be available after, if anyone would like to go through it further. And then highlighting some of the legislative review from 2022. Just a quick review of what planning commission and community development achieved together. The first few months of the year, we wrapped up the community visioning and began work on several large projects, including the Housing Action Plan, Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, and Surface Water Code Amendments. We had public hearings for school concurrency in March, as well as for Surface Water Code Amendments in April. And the planning commission also worked on the planning commission roles, responsibilities, and bylaws. And then in the summer and fall, introduced the Critical Areas Ordinance Update, Transfer of Development- Transfer of Development Rights Program, and the Climate Action Plan, which we saw today, and will see quite a bit more of in twenty-twenty-three. And then upcoming projects for twenty-twenty-three. Uh, most of these will look pretty familiar to you already, but we'll be continuing on with the Housing Action Plan. Uh, we'll actually be back at the Planning Commission Meeting next, uh I believe on the nineteenth, um to work on some housing strategies. And that project will be wrapping up in June of this year. Uh, we'll be continuing on work with the twenty-twenty-four Comprehensive Plan Update, uh which goes hand in hand with the Climate Action Plan and Critical Areas Ordinance Update. Um, and then in response to those will be um the evaluation of the Transfer of Development Rights Program that will be in direct response to comp plan. Um, and these topics will be revisited many times this year, um but along with potential other projects. Um, but these five are going to be our main focus. Uh, will take a lot of your time and staff time throughout twenty-twenty-three. Um, and just wanted to say thank you to you all for your hard work. Um, it doesn't go unnoticed. You guys spend a lot of time and hours outside of meetings, um looking through the work that we do and bring to you. So if you have any questions about anything um for this upcoming year, please always feel free to reach out. If I don't know the answer myself, I can connect you to somebody who probably does know the answer. Um, but that's all I have. I'll hand it back to you.
Thanks, Jackie. I'm uh stuck on the avatars, and I'm wondering if the Planning Commission can all have their own avatars, although I'm a little concerned what mine might look like, so maybe that's not such a grand idea.
They are self-created, so.
So I could get a picture of Tom Cruise and put a little gray hair on it and.
Exactly.
Great. Okay, thanks, Jackie. Uh, next, let's move on to public comment, agenda-related public comment for this evening. Oh, is there some, is there another comment?
Uh, I think before we get to public comment, uh Deputy Deputy Director Hildy has a uh Deputy Director's Report she'd like to give.
Oh, okay, sorry. I jumped over that. Maybe that was my confusion earlier.
No problem. Just give me a minute to um share my screen here. Okay, and is that up? If I can get a confirmation from.
Yep, we can see it.
Yeah. Great. Um, good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Kelly Hildy, and I am the Deputy Director of Community Development. Tonight, I will be providing an update on the planning efforts for the Comprehensive Plan. Um, a little bit more information on the Climate Action Plan, um um from what you've heard tonight, and the Housing Plan, Housing Action Plan. First, um I wanted to draw attention to the new website that is focused on the Comprehensive Plan Update and associated projects. Although um now live, this project-specific website is having new content added weekly. Shortly, among other content being added, we will be, oh, there will, we will have a chron- chronology of meetings and outreach events posted to the Engagement Tab, including links to meeting agendas and meeting recordings. We are working to make sure that this page is cross-linked to other city pages and that we are directing interested parties to this page. The website address is um envision samamish twenty-twenty-four dot org. So please pass that along to all your friends. Um, in addition, um to typing the website into your computer browser, the website is also linked through the Community Development Department page and also accessible using the search box in the upper right-hand uh corner of the website by typing in this, in uh the words Comprehensive Plan. Over the next few months, there will be many meetings on the Comprehensive Plan, Climate Action Plan, and Housing Action Plan. I've listed the schedule of meetings here. There will likely be meetings added as we ramp up outreach efforts on the Comprehensive Plan. For now, I've listed the meetings through March. For the Comprehensive Plan, we continue to focus on developing and finalizing the vision statement, continuing with review of the Commerce and PSRC updated checklists and building background information on topics such as land use. Here, I've highlighted Comprehensive Plan-related meetings through March. For the Climate Action Plan, our focus is continuing to um with the grant-funded uh greenhouse gas and vehicle miles traveled background work, uh where we are finalizing the data collection and analyzing data for trends. Once we have completed data collection and analysis, we will continue with development of emissions reduction strategies. Here, I've highlighted Climate Action Plan-related meetings through March. For the Housing Action Plan, our focus is continuing with development of housing strategies, and we are currently in the housing. We are currently in the Housing Strategy Input Phase. The next phase will be drafting the Housing Action Plan. Here, I've highlighted um Housing Action Plan-related meetings through March. And that concludes um this month's Director's Report, our Deputy Director's Report. Um, uh, David and I are always available for questions. Um, if there are any follow-up questions, this presentation will also be posted to the Planning Commission webpage. Um, so that um there, if anyone wants to look at those dates a little bit more closely, um that information will be provided. With that, I'll pass it back to you, um Chair Bothman.
Thank you, Deputy Director Hildy. All right, um, since I'm stumbling through the agenda, I'll ask Evan, is there anything else from staff before we move on to public comment? All right, uh, since we're closing, getting close to the end here, could someone move to extend uh probably fifteen, twenty minutes, something like that?
Move to extend to eight forty-five.
Second.
It's been moved to second and to extend eight forty-five. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right, uh, let's go ahead and do public comment on agenda-related items. Do we have anyone for agenda-related public comment this evening?
We have two hands raised. Ms. Victor, I'm going to promote you to panelist.
Hi, this is Mary Victor from Samamish. Um, I did want to talk to uh Climate Action Plan, but I first wanted to say I thought you guys have had great insight, good questions, good clarifications, broader ideas, and I think it's really exciting, some of the things that are getting talked about. Um, with regard to the Climate Action Plan during non-agenda comment, I talked about Bozeman, Montana, and some of the things they're doing there. And they do have a Climate Action Plan that was adopted in twenty-twenty. It does come with a dashboard that's online at the Bozeman dot net website. If you just search in their search box for Climate Action Plan, and then it brings you to a nice page. Um, on page five of their about two-hundred-page uh Climate Action Plan, I'm going to read here because I think if people, we talked about education, and I think that was mentioned by several of the Planning Commissioners tonight. I think education is number one. So this paragraph really stuck out at me. It says, "As national policy frameworks are being considered for building back better and more equitably after COVID-nineteen, climate action takes on new meaning and opportunity. For example, considering the Bozeman community members," and I've told you that the Bozeman community is about the size of Samamish, "they spend over a hundred million dollars per year on electricity, natural gas, transportation fuels, and transition to carbon-neutral economy. And over the next thirty years, that should be navigated with short-term economic conditions in mind. This includes prioritizing cost-effective solutions and aligning with the city's efforts to foster a strong economic base." So now that really uh kind of told me like how important it is to do everything and a lot of the questions that you had. Um, similar to what Carrie had, I had my air conditioner go out last year. We decided not to replace it yet because we weren't sure if we needed it. And then I was just going to replace it with another one, but then we looked at a heat pump, and then I got into all those questions. And in general, if I get rid of my hybrid car and I hook up to electricity and I get rid of my furnace over time and my water heater and put those on electric, am I really generating less um less types of things that um, you know, cause or or reduce climate change? And I think if those numbers were out there and there were some way to do it, people could make decisions, because there are a lot of us that, you know, you you need to replace things in your house and you don't know. I was really glad that T C had brought up the uh energy audits and that type of thing as well. Um, so just back to Bozeman here, I wanted to read a few things. Um, so I was, I looked at Isiqua's uh Climate Plan, Redmond's, I think, Woodinville's, and Kirkland's. Um, there are other ones that people should read through, so I'll try to send out those links in a separate email. At least maybe for the City Council Commission Meeting um on Tuesday. Um, but one thing I wanted to say is there's like sixty-four special actions that are in six different focus areas that have three different categories of things. And just one of them, they have two pages with a nine tiles each, so eighteen things that individual Bozeman residents can do for climate at um effort. And one of their biggest things is to use energy uses to reduce the amount that you use during peak energy demand from four to eight P M. So I don't know if that affects us here in Washington, but I thought that was a good thing. Um, you just need everybody to change their energy behaviors, and for them to do that, they need to have the data on what makes sense and what to do when. And probably if you teach the kids, they'll teach the parents. Um, there was the uh explorer opportunities to install renewable energy on your site. We talked about that with, uh, you know, if I do it, is it better or worse, walking, biking, carpooling, um getting to know your neighbors and swapping um contact information and um working together during emergencies. They also had one which was really important uh on limiting idling and combining trips. Um, so I can tell you when I take the ferries over uh uh to the to different places nearby, um, there is usually a no idle zone. And I think recently, when I was at Eastlake High School, they have a no idle zone. But I know in the past, before COVID, I would be at the Samamish Library, which is at King County site, and people downstairs in the enclosed garage would be sitting there on their phones in their car with their idling going on, which normally is it not good for emissions, but it's also actually dangerous for other people entering and leaving the garage. So I think there's a lot of things that people could learn from, and I think the more that you let people know earlier, we don't have to wait for these two years to go by to have a Climate Action Plan to start doing them. I think there's so many things that people can do. And as we get used to doing them, um and looking at packaging and reducing irrigation and um reducing pest pesticide use and herbicide use and maintaining our plants or helping plant trees or keeping trees, I think that's really important. Um, so those are just the things I wanted to mention off the top of my head. Um, Carrie, I believe, had brought up the thing about buses aren't listed, or maybe it was somebody else. Um, have we looked at the difference between buses and shuttles? Um, because I think the city might be wanting to do more shuttles for transportation. And uh also just CO2 is like one of the largest amounts of emissions. Um, and methane, I think, is uh one, like, it's about forty-five percent or whatever for carbon CO2. And I think it's uh like one-third of that for methane, but I know methane has actually bigger, worse uh impacts for greenhouse gases, I believe. Um, and I know on one of the sites, there was actually a nice little EPA uh video, kind of a inform- information thing that was like a minute that showed people what greenhouse gases are. So I think getting some of those things on the website even now would be very helpful. Um, I did want to thank T C and David Pyle for bringing up the things that you could do. We really do need to uh commemorate and preserve areas that have more naturally affordable homes and people that are on older homes um and being able to help them do maintenance things to replace their weather stripping or to do insulation. Um, in addition to the energy audits that PSC does, I don't know if they come with it, but there are things like infrared cameras where someone can come into your house as part of that, and they can actually just look at your walls and tell you which windows or which walls either have slumped um insulation, or maybe it wasn't insulated. Um, and you can just do it by looking at it with infrared. Um, and um, I know my hus- my hu- my husband does gas leak detection uh products. And he works with methane a lot reduction, and I know that he even has an IR camera that does that. So um, those are just some of the things I wanted to bring up. I think you guys have had a really um great meeting with really good inputs, and I want to thank the consultants for what they did and all the staff, and particularly to Jackie Belial, who um spoke about all the teams that are at the city that work all the time, that we don't necessarily see those people behind the line. So thank you for all that, and I'm finished with my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Victor, and we have one more hand raised. Mr. Stickney, I'm going to promote you to panelist.
Paul, if you can hear me, you're still muted.
Good evening, Commissioners. Paul Stickney, agenda comment. Had to change into my Seattle Seahawk uh t-shirt. Don't know if we're going to make the playoffs. It's kind of an interesting scenario, but um I agree with a lot of what Mary said, and instead of repeating some of those things, I echo all of her comments, including lots of great comments from staff tonight and all of you on the Planning Commission, very thoughtful consultants, excellent job, uh more uh detailed and thorough, oh, and a data-rich than I was expecting, and that is a good thing to have that data. So appreciate that on all. I've got kind of a shotgun approach of some comments and some notes that I took um during the meeting. Uh, talking about what uh T C Labby was talking about, uh on the Town Center and the other centers. Is the work that was in tonight's presentation based on what's on the ground already in Town Center, or what can be put on the ground, or a hybrid of both? And I also agree that it would be interesting to get some more data on the commercial aspects of the other three centers in Samamish besides Town Center, uh on what's on the ground, and uh check that out. I did notice it was interesting that the emissions for the greenhouse gas was roughly three percent for Town Center and eighty-eight percent, or I'm sorry, ninety uh six percent citywide. I'm sure that will change as Town Center gets built out, but that leads me to something that I didn't hear come up. What's the relationship of single-family home, you know, miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions compared to multifamily? And I'm going to wager that there's some uh metrics out there that have some different information on a cottage home, on senior living, on condos and apartments that are one and two-bedroom versus three. I think that type of, you know, development is coming. It's not going to be all we do by any means, but I think it would be very interesting to have that information. Uh, something that gave me a tiny bit of heartburn today was just a comment in passing during the initial presentation that said we've had unprecedented growth since two thousand and fifteen. Well, I would agree, in the eighties and nineties, we had unprecedented growth, but I would suggest taking that language out because since uh two thousand and fifteen, we've only averaged about uh two hundred homes a year. But I am going to share a couple of numbers you've heard before, but it's more for not just the rate of growth, but it's the age of the houses in Samamish as well. In general, and this is close, it's a swag, um scientific guess. Well, it's over a guess, but it it's close. Uh, before nineteen eighty, Samamish had about three thousand homes built. From nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety-nine, uh, what is now the shape of our community added about thirteen thousand houses. From two thousand to two thousand and five, we built out the King County uh pipeline houses, which were close to three thousand. And then um since two thousand and five, w- w- the city has built about thirty-five hundred units, uh primarily single-family home and some multifamily in the Town Center. So the rates of growth um for the twenty years from nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety-nine was about six hundred and fifty homes a year. For the five years to build out the King County uh pipeline stuff was roughly five hundred. And you could look at a slightly different, but a close estimate is the community's averaged about two hundred new units a year averaged since uh two thousand and six until now. Um, what's also interesting is that of the roughly twenty-two thousand five hundred housing units in the city, a little over eighty-five percent of those are single-family home, and a little bit under is multifamily. Good for the residents to know that, because probably those ratios are going to change as we move forward on our next comp plan and figuring out what's the right mix of housing. on our next comp plan and figuring out what's the right mix of housing to meet some needs over life. In regards to the single-family houses that we have, I'm going to put a stake in the sand that isn't necessarily accurate, but it's something I like. For the last probably 10 years, we've had mostly large, single-family homes. But I've been in real estate a long time. I know that there's a lot of what I would call more medium-sized and smaller-sized. Might be interesting to know what some of the greenhouse uses are, both on size and age built. And for those of you who do not know, I moved here from 1990 in the state of Montana, sold there for a while. Mary's, you know, Montana State, Bozeman, and I'm University of Montana in Missoula. But I learned from Montana Power back in the day that roughly 80 to 90% of heat loss was up, and only 10 to 20% out the sides. I don't know that that's still accurate, but that would be very important information for knowing how to, if you can do things to retrofit existing housing, if those ratios are still true, and then the insulation values up versus sideways, and the windows, which can be quite expensive as compared to adding insulation. Something else that I wanted to mention that I didn't hear, or if it was stated, I missed it, is solar panels. I've been seeing it in some of the neighborhoods in Sammamish. That's an interesting mixed bag of tricks from a character perspective versus the energy that can be saved or gained by a homeowner of having solar panels. And last thing I'd like to comment on, as of the 2000 census, I'm sorry, 2020 census, excuse me, about 55% of the households in Sammamish had a child 18 or younger, and 45% of households did not. So those are my add-ons tonight. I felt it was a real good meeting, a lot of data. Totally supple. Have a good evening and appreciate the opportunity to chime in.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney, and we have no more hands raised.
All right. Thanks, Julian. Anything else from anyone this evening? Just a couple of quick comments, a reminder to take a look at the calendar and keep up with when the meetings will be now that we're going to get in a rhythm for the beginning of 2023. And another quick comment, I had an interesting experience this week. I spent some time looking at a planning commission meeting from one of our neighbors, neighboring cities. And I think it's actually, I was surprised, I hadn't done that in a long time. It's pretty valuable once in a while to see what other people are doing and how their issues are either the same or different. So I'd encourage you, I mean, you know, five or 10 minutes, just go take a look at somebody else's planning commission video and see how they do things and how we compare and what their issues are. And I think it's good to get an outside bit of perspective, so I'd encourage that for everybody on the commission. All right, I think that's it for this evening. If someone would move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
It's been moved in second that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.